Call the meeting to order. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us as we make our decisions. Christ name.
Amen.
This is a new year. Happy new year to everyone. January the ninth, 2024. You have the minutes of the special call meeting of December the twelfth, 2023. Before you, I'll entertain the motion.
So moved.
Motion second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Also, the minutes of the regular meeting of December the twelfth, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second. We adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. I'd like to call up Nanette Freeman and Bill Stevenson for just a second.
Yeah, it's time to embarrass students. That's okay.
Yeah. Come over here, Bill. It's kind of a sad moment, but also, you know, a proud opportunity. This is the last week for both Nanette and Bill. We're losing a lot of great talent, personality, family members, all of the above. Nanette has decided to reunite with family back in Florida. Wonderful opportunity. Very, very thankful for all Nanette has done. And I'll be honest, she has changed the culture in HR, and I think the employees here will attest. It's a very, very employee-first operation. I know she treats council members really well when you're in there, so that culture's going to be hard to replace, but so thankful for all of them, Nanette, and what she's done. Bill?
Yes, sir.
Bill, twenty years.
Twenty years.
Twenty years. Bill's going to be changing professions. He's going to be entering into the ministry.
Yes, sir.
A very exciting time for Bill, good opportunity. Over the past twenty years, Bill has led, what I can confidently say, one of the most stable and respected inspections department in the state of Georgia. Basically, Bill's department has run its own. Very little oversight that I have to do up there. I don't, it's going to be hard to replace Bill and his knowledge and that stable leadership, but we certainly wish him the best in his ministry endeavors. So to both of you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Job well done. Thank you very much.
A pleasure servant, citizens of Newton, where you are.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a resolution in recognition of Councilmember George M. Alexander, who is also leaving us today after twenty years of service on the council. Before that, some twelve, fourteen years on the planning commission. I guess the only question is, is there anyone on council willing to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
(laughing). Mr. Mayor, I'd be honored to make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, that we adopt the resolution included in your agenda in recognition of Councilmember George Alexander. Any discussion? It's your opportunity.
Discussion, George.
I just want to thank everyone, and it's been wonderful, the wonderful thirty-four years, as the mayor said, fourteen years on the planning commission, twenty years as a city councilman. It's been my honor to serve the citizens and also the employees. And I couldn't, you know, people say, you did this, this, this. No, I didn't. The employees did, and the citizens did. And they're the ones that get the credit. And I thank everyone, and I've enjoyed working with everyone on the council. And I charge you all to, one, take care of the citizens, all the citizens, and to take care of the employees, because they are the heartbeat, the employees. And I especially want to thank the police and the fire, because that safety is so imperant upon this city. So thank you. It's been wonderful, and I'm going to enjoy time now with my wife, and we have a grandson, five-year-old grandson, and we have just announced last week another grandbaby on the way, so. And I have a few cars that I want to mess around with, so. But thank you for the honor of serving everyone. Thank you.
Okay, let's don't forget to call the question. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda today, under unfinished business, is a resolution certifying the results of the City of Newton municipal election, November the seventh, 2023, and the City of Newton municipal election runoff on December the fifth, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is a second.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the resolution certifying the election results. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to correct my name on the second page.[386.59][386.59](laughing).
Okay.
Yeah. Under the last part there.
All right, so who made that motion?
I did.
Will you accept the amended motion?
Yes, I will.
And the second?
Second, yeah.
Amended second.
Thank you.
Has a name change to Mr. Correctco? I'm not sure, I didn't look. I'm not sure what they called him.
Dusty.
Okay.
Coco.
All right, so we have that change, and that is the motion before us. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. I am at this time going to adjourn and sign aye, and we will move right away into our next agenda. Yep. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order and begin us with any questions. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us this afternoon as we make our decisions. Christ name.
Amen.
This is the new meeting of January the ninth, 2024. The first item of business here is the swearing-in ceremony of Paul Guillaume, District One, Post A, Dustin Correctco, District One, Post B, James L. Thompson III, District Three, Post A, and Cynthia E. Jenkins, District Three, Post B. We'll start in that order. Mr. Guillaume. Mr. Sears.
Mr. Guillaume brought his own Bible, so we will. So we'll, he'll put your left hand on there. You raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and truly perform the duties of councilmember of this city, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Newton to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the state of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia. So help me God.
I will.
All right. Good. Congratulations.
Mr. Correctco.
My wife was unable to join us today, so I'm honored to have Ms. Guillaume hold my Bible. Left hand. Yes.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and truly perform the duties of councilmember of this city, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Newton, and to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the state of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia. So help me God. To the firm part. All right. Congratulations.
Mr. Thompson. I understand that you have extended family here, so we don't want to rush through this portion if there's any photo ops or anything that need to go along with this. We're happy to take that time to make that happen.
Do you want to auto-come at one time right away?
However you would like to do it. This is totally up to you.
We make this your.
So Mr. Mayor and Councilor, just while Mr. Guillaume and Mr. Correctco use their own Bible, this Bible we're using today, actually was in Mr. Thompson's at the time he lived in what is now the Hollis Museum. This Bible was given to Mr. C.J. Smith, who was president of First National Bank in Newton by his daughter, and he lived in the house the city owns now, the two-story brick house on Temple Avenue. So there's a little history behind this for Mr. Thompson.
All right.
If you raise your right hand, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will truly and faithfully perform the duties of councilmember of this city, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Newton to the best of my skill and ability, and as to me shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the state of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia. So help me God.
I do.
All right. Congratulations. Mr. Mayor, I present Mr. Thompson. Do you can take his seat at his name.
The phone's just about to start.
Leave it. Ask him to leave it.
Yeah, pass it. Yeah. Okay, Ms. Jenkins, time for swearing-in.
I have asked Pastor Terry Lemmons to do my swearing-in, and I will be using my grandfather's. Bye.
Do you have other family members you'd like in the photo?
Sure. Everybody.[919.96][919.96](laughing).
I want to thank Representative Cynthia Jenkins and Mayor Brady for this opportunity to serve. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and truly perform the duties of councilmember of this city, that I will support and defend the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and the Charter of the City of Newton to the best of my skill and ability, as to me shall seem to the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I may not be the holder of any office or trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which by the laws of the state of Georgia I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to be a public officer according to the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia. So help me God.
I do. Thank you.
Okay, we'll head on with the rest of the agenda. The next item is the election of Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Paul Guillaume.
Second.
Motion and second, we nominate Mr. Paul Guillaume as Mayor Pro Tim for this year. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda today, appointments of city officials, department heads. Mr. Thompson.
Even though we've got a potential couple of vacancies coming up, still I'd like to reappoint all current staff in department heads for 2024.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second, that we reappoint under the recommendation of the city manager, all existing department heads for 2024. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of city attorney. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Brad.
Brad Sears, I'm sorry.[1144.76][1144.76](laughing).
Okay. Mr. Sears, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Municipal Court Judge, let me help here, Clay Collins.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. We appoint Mr. Collins as municipal court judge. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Municipal Court Judge Pro Tim, Rufus Smith Jr.
Someone.
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Mr. Smith, Mr. Rufus Smith Jr. as Mayor Municipal Court Judge Pro Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Municipal Court Solicitor, Danielle Sewell.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Now, we also have several reports, I mean, appointments to boards and commissions. You had those before you. I'll go down the list as they appear on your handout. Ms. Jenkins, cultural arts commission.
I'll need that on the next agenda.
All right. Mr. Guillaume, development authority.
Yes, I would like to nominate Joy Barnes.
Second.
All right. Joy Barnes on development authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
I'm sorry, also, would you please send a letter to Mr. Chris Hunt and thank him for his years of service?
Yes, we will. All right. Okay, so we did vote on that. Thank you. Ms. Jenkins, for the Farm Street Cemetery Commission.
I would like to reappoint Lauren Taylor.
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Lauren Taylor to the Farm Street Cemetery Commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. I need Ms. Brooks to be put on the next agenda, if you don't mind. Mr. Shell, Farm Street Cemetery.
Would you put her on the next agenda, please?
All right. Mr. Correctco.
Next one as well.
All right. Mr. Guillaume.
I'd like to renominate John Pullicare.
Second.
Motion is second. We renominate John Pullicare to the Farm Street Cemetery Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next, Mr. DeBeaus.
Next meeting, please.
All right, thank you. Housing Authority, Cassie Hooks, I'd like that on our next meeting. Planning Commission, Mr. Correctco.
Next meeting, please.
All right. And Tree Commission, Mr. Shell.
Next meeting, please.
All right, thank you. We move on. The next item under our agenda is operations with city manager. Schedule the city floating holiday of 2024. What's it to be, Mr. Phil?
2024, July the fifth falls on a prime, so I think that would be an excellent day for the employees to enjoy the holidays and have a four-day weekend, July the fifth would be my recommendation.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And second.
Motion is second. I think you're going to be the most appreciated city manager in the state.[1340.76][1340.76](laughing).
This will be the next item to approve.
That's right.
Number one.
That's right. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay. The next consideration, I don't have anything today. The next is a consideration of an ordinance to provide for the adoption of a budget. Its execution and effect for fiscal year beginning January the first, 2024, ended December the thirty-first, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the budget? For those of you who are in the audience who don't know, we actually had a budget hearing in December, and so we're here today to adopt the budget after that budget hearing. It was open to the public. Anything from anyone? Is it, okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The next is a consideration of a resolution to amend the 2024 Peyton Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. For many of you, you've seen this several times. The next item is a consideration of mea culpa cell of reserve and supplemental capacity to the City of Newton on behalf of the City of Marietta. Any discussion on this?
I'll make a motion. We accept that.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the consideration of mea culpa cell from Marietta to the City of Newton. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next is Sixty Sunset Lane. This is a request for a public hearing to be set on February the twenty-seventh, 2024 for the structure. Mr. Murray, how are you today?
Doing well, Mayor Brady and Council. Yes, this is a request from the Building Department for a public hearing for a dilapidated and unsafe structure, Sixty Sunset Lane, to be held on February twenty-seventh.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request for the Sixty Sunset Lane, public hearing date of February the twenty-seventh, 2024. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The, thank you, Mr. Murray. The next item on the agenda is a rezoning request. This is for information only to be passed, this is to be passed on to the, to the planning commission. This is a rezoning request, RZ 2024-01, by Robert Bergman on behalf of Fourth Quarter Properties LLC for eight-point-four-four acres located in Ashley Park at 440 Noonan Crossing Bypass, tax parcel 086-5043-004, a change in MXD conditions. As I said, there's no action needed here, information only. The next item under unfinished business is Twenty-One Perry Street. Owner update and request for extension. Mr. Murray, you're still on.
Yes, sir. Yes, Twenty-One Berry Avenue was last before you in September, where an extension was granted. The, that extension is now expired, and the owner is here today and is requesting an extension. There has been some work completed. The plumbing work has been completed, the electrical work, I believe, has just started, and he's waiting for the electricians to be able to come back and complete their work. The holdup has been the accessibility of the trades. Mr. Calderon is not a large customer, and so he's having to kind of wait, and they work him in as they can. And according to Mr. Calderon, that work he hopes to have completed soon. He is maintaining the property, the lot. We haven't had any complaints about the lot being overgrown or trash on the lot. The property is secured. And Mr. Calderon is asking for a ninety-day extension, and he's hoping to be able to complete the project at that time. Mr. Calderon is present, and he said he would be available to answer any questions if you had any.
Any questions, Mr. Calderon?
You say he's waiting on the electrician to finish it.
Yes, sir.
What else is left besides?
Well, after the electrical, plumbing's done, those inspections will need to be completed, and then the interior finishes, drywall, and then the interior finishes. So, and that, he's got a crew lined up for that. He's just been waiting on the electrician and the plumbers.
Any other questions?
I have a question, but maybe more so of a comment. Is it, would it be fair to say for us to say, to have a report back in forty-five days as to progress? Is that unrealistic, or can we?
Good idea.
Anybody have a mind to do that?
If that's what you want.
That's what I would like, yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
All right. So there's, is that a motion to grant forty-five, I mean, ninety days with a forty-five-day report? Is that what you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. There's a motion is second to grant the ninety-day extension with a forty-five-day report or whatever closely falls on our meeting dates. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next, under visitors' petitions, communications, and complaints. This is a request from Molly Roberts to block four parking spaces in front of Nalet Records on Saturday, January the thirteenth, for an event. Any questions regarding this item?
I do. Do we, is this, it says in the agenda, six to eight-thirty P.M. I know some people want to start blocking off earlier than that, and I wanted to know if that was part of their request, because the Martin Luther King Parade is happening that afternoon at noon, and we wouldn't want to take away parking spots from people who are trying to participate in that too.
Yeah, I don't anticipate us having to block anything around the time of the parade. There will probably need to be some monitoring of the spaces leading up to the six o'clock hour, that when a car does leave, that we can block it off, but I can't imagine it being around the parade. It probably will start at four o'clock or so. Yeah, three. We'll work and make sure it doesn't conflict with the parade.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, that ends our regular meeting today, and we do have need for an executive session for legal and for personnel, so your first official act is ready for.
Here it goes. I move that we now enter into closed session as allowed by OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-four, and pursuant to advice by the city attorney for the purpose of discussing legal and personnel, and that we, in open session, adopt the resolution authorizing and directing the mayor or the presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-four, and that this body ratify the actions of council taking in closed session, and confirm that the subject matters of the closed session were within the exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Second.
Motion is second. We go into executive session for legal and personnel. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you for being here today, ladies and gentlemen.